Great, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Select meeting Tuesday, May 23. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'd like to start by congratulating and welcoming our newest board member, Cindy Doty, to the Board of Select People.
Thank you, your honor. Thank you.
So, we're glad to have Cindy aboard and to have our board at full strength. So, it's been a little while, so it's good. So, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to start with just a few announcements. We do have the Memorial Day Parade this weekend. And it is Sunday, May 28. The Color Guard and firing squad will leave the Legion at 9:45 a.m. on Sunday, and you'll hear taps being played at the cemeteries. At 12 o'clock is when the marchers will meet in front of the American Legion, and the parade will step off at approximately 12:30 p.m. on Sunday, making its way down to Memorial Town Hall, and that's where we'll have our ceremony. The guest speakers, Pat K. Helane, the Hampshire County Sheriff, and also an Army National Guard veteran. So, we hope to see everybody there. Afterwards, there's the chicken barbecue at the Lions Pavilion. So, wanted to make that announcement. Also, we're looking to have members contact the town administrator or the secretary's office of town hall if you're interested in all of being part of the planning process for the 350th birthday of the town of Hatfield, which will be in 2020. But it's a lot of planning and a lot of preparation in order to put something of that magnitude together. So, we hope people will reach out to Marlene and the town secretaries and show an interest, as large or little interest as you wish. It's all about being part of the process and having a say in the event. Lastly, for announcements, we do have the Housing Committee that we've put together. We're looking for individuals to serve on that committee to work also through the town administrator's office. As far as the different affordable housing, finding locations for housing, that's pretty much what it's all about. I think we still only have one person that's signed up so far. So, if you want more information, and we're going to talk a little bit about it later, actually, as part of our agenda, but if you'd like some more information or you think it's something you'd be interested in, please reach out to Marlene or the town secretaries. I think that's it for announcements, unless Cindy or Ed, if you guys had anything for public announcements? Okay. As far as public forum goes, is there anybody here from the public that had something they wanted to state? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, which, there's no minutes. Yeah, right, that's going to be at the next meeting. So, okay. It's our standard form, so let me put a check through that. All right. So, for posted business now, now that the board has had an election, now's the time of year where we will nominate and elect a new chairman of the select board. We will also ask people who want to be liaisons to particular groups and organizations, as is tradition. The board members kind of normally just divvy that up and grab a handful each, so.
I would start with making the motion to nominate Brian Moriarty as chairman of the board.
Okay. Well, thank you. Is there any discussion or comment anybody wants to make?
Don't think so.
All right. So, I guess I will. So, thank you. I appreciate your confidence. Really, for me, the chairing of the board is really about working with Marlene and you guys to put the agenda together and basically running the meeting. Other than that, we're three select board members. We all have an individual vote. That's how it should be, and that's just the process. So, thank you. I appreciate that, and I accept. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, thank you. Do you want to go through the liaisons, or would you prefer to maybe present the list of who you'd like to, you know, because there's roughly 10 or 12, to submit them to Marlene, and then we'll just come back? Is that all right? Or would you rather go through it now? Doesn't matter to me.
Later's fine.
So, we have the list of who normally has a liaison, so why don't we fill that out and just give it to Marlene, and we'll put it together? Okay, great, thanks. If there's something you really maybe feel strongly about, maybe 2, 4, 6, 8. So, there's 10 or 11, maybe pick 4, 1 through 4, and then, you know, and then we'll decide to line people up with their backgrounds and that type of thing, if that's what you're interested in. Okay, thanks. Next on the agenda, we have a transfer of a liquor license application. Marlene, did you want to speak to that, or?
Oh, before you begin.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I'm in a butter, we, the town council said I should make sure there's no conflict. I should excuse myself from this vote, so I'm going to step down on this vote, so that there's no conflict.
Okay. Makes sense. Better safe than sorry. Oh, you're really stepping away from the vote. All right, Ed. So, what we have is to the transfer of a liquor license application for what we all know in town as the Hatfield Market.
Correct.
Up on the corner. So, we're looking to transfer the liquor license from Hatfield Market to Naxog Incorporated, doing business as the Hatfield Market. Is that right?
Correct. That is correct. And I believe Mr. Habib is here.
Is there?
I'm Chai's brother.
Okay.
He actually had a location planned way before, you know, the announcement of this meeting. So, I am representing Naxog today for, on his behalf.
Okay.
My name is Hamid, H-A-M-I-D, and last name's Habib, H-A-B-I-B.
Are you an officer of the corporation?
I'm not.
I don't know if the board members have any questions. Normally, they would be directed to the manager that the license is being transferred to.
Right.
I was not aware that he would not be here.
He just couldn't take that.
Okay, I did not know that.
If it helps, I can have him on the phone as a conference. If you have any questions about the store, about the company, I can answer that.
So, I guess my, thank you, by the way. So, I guess my only question is more of from the technical perspective, not about the store or the business, per se. Well, when is the store looking to open?
July 1st.
July 1st? I mean, honestly, I would prefer to have, when will he be back from vacation?
He's actually coming tonight. He, his flight is at midnight.
Timing's everything, huh?
He can get a flight earlier.
I think I would prefer to have the manager here, and it's really just in case there were questions that came up. Again, it's more of a technicality, and we had sent this out, and we publish it in the newspaper as we are required to do. We also don't want to hold up the business from opening, so I'm wondering if we could put this.
We could continue it, too.
On our agenda, we have a meeting the first week of June.
Okay.
So, that would still probably leave 3, roughly 3 or 4 weeks before your planned opening.
Okay.
I just think that's the safer way to do it, and I think in case there's any legalities that come up from the manager actually not being here, we'd rather just delay it a couple of weeks versus do something that we all think we're all set with and then run into an issue down the road.
I think that should be fine.
Okay, so.
The only concern was that he's planning to open in July 1st, and he already leased the building.
Yes, understood.
Yeah.
I would think that the only, the delay, should everything be going through, would just be to hold off to our next meeting.
Okay.
Which is scheduled for June, the first Wednesday in June, which is the.
September 7.
7th or 6th, you know, it'll be a Wednesday, and we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay.
Please, if possible, make sure that he's here, just so we have the right people in place to have the conversation with. So, we're just going to table this? Do we even need to, you want an official vote to table?
Just a vote to continue the.
Continue the discussion at our next meeting.
Meeting.
So, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
June 7.
June 7th is the date.
June 7, okay.
We just verified. Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, that's really the reason for this, for the delay, is just to have 3 people, okay? Thank you.
So, we're all done?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Actually, while Ed's getting wired up, there was an announcement that I did want to make, if you guys don't mind, and that is, it wasn't on our official agenda, but I wanted to comment on it. So, the Daily Hampshire Gazette held an advertising campaign with the schools, the local schools throughout Hampshire County, probably part of Franklin County as well. And what I, and so it was an art contest to come up with students to create an advertisement for a business. The grand prize winner out of all of the students that participated in this was Santana Dubois, who was a grade 12 student at Smith Academy, and it was for Regali and Walder Orthodontics. So, I just wanted to extend our thanks and appreciation to Santana for being part of the process and congratulating her on winning. We also had some division winners. We had Greta Cooper from Smith Academy in grade 8, Jason Archambeau, grade 12 at Smith Academy, and Zane Wendelowski, grade 11 from Smith Academy. So, we were well represented out of what appears to be 13 awardees throughout Hampshire and Franklin County. Smith Academy students received 4 of those. So, congratulations to those students and their artistic abilities. So, thank you. Todd? So, next up, we have Todd Ford is here from HCOG, the Hampshire Council of Governments. He's the executive director to give an overview of the organization, and Todd brought along some friends, and to give an overview of HCOG, which is an organization that Hatfield utilizes for various services. So, welcome, to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good, thanks for having us.
You're welcome.
So, my name's Todd Ford. I'm the executive director of the Hampshire Council of Governments, and so today, we just want to update you on kind of the programs and services that we are offering, the programs and services that Hatfield is taking advantage of, and also hear from you as to anything that you would recommend that we work on to improve, or look at new programs and services that could potentially benefit the community or your schools or the residents. And we're happy to always take ideas and turn them into sustainable programs and services that can benefit the entire region. Brought with me today, Ellen Batchelder, our Director of Purchasing, as well as Sinead Coleman, our Director of Energy Operations, and they're going to talk to you about their respective programs and how Hatfield takes advantage of them or could take even more advantage of our offerings. Just very briefly, for those of you who don't know, the Hampshire Council is a very unique organization, we're the only regional government body in the Commonwealth that is not also a regional planning agency. So, what does that actually mean? It means we're not a federally recognized planning agency. The PVPC covers this territory from that perspective. And because we're not a planning agency, we do not receive the $5 to $10 million worth of federal grants every year, nor do we receive what's called the district local technical assistance money, which is money from the state that goes directly to the RPAs. So, the majority of our budget, but for the $24,000 total in due membership from the participating communities, comes from our fee-for-service programs and services. So, we have an $8 million budget, so that means everything but the $24,000 covered by the dues comes from our fee-for-service programs and services. So, it's a very unique model in the Commonwealth, and we are pleased to say that in FY16, we finished the fiscal year in the black, and it looks like in FY17, we will also be finishing the fiscal year in the net positive as well. So, the model is working. It can always be improved, and we're here to hear from you how you could see that possibly happening. I want to turn it over now to Sinead to talk about the energy programs, and then I'll jump back in after Sinead and Ellen speak.
Sure. Thank you. So, once again, my name is Sinead Coleman. I'm the Director of Energy Operations at Hampshire Power, which is under the umbrella of Hampshire Council of Governments. We are the only nonprofit Massachusetts-based energy supplier in the state. Very unique. And with that is, I just want to say first off, thank you. The town of Hatfield, as well as the Hatfield School District, are customers of ours. So, you get your power from Hampshire Power. You'll see, you see us on your bill every month, so I just want to thank you for supporting us. And a little bit more about just Hampshire Power is we have, we have 20 communities across the state that are getting their, their residents, their businesses, and their municipalities are all getting power from us. We have 190,000 rate pares across the Commonwealth, so which is pretty good for the only nonprofit supplier in the state. And also, a program is, we have our net metering credits that we've actually just started administering and also selling. And so, this is something that I actually really wanted to bring up today, given that one of these projects, these net metering projects is located near town. So, in that blue folder that you all have in front of you, there is a one-pager on the left-hand side, behind the Hampshire Power versus the Big Boys, which goes into anaerobic, anaerobic digestion project that is going to be located on Luther-Beldon Farms. So, this project is going to be producing 1, sorry, 2.1 million kilowatt hours for each year, and we are looking for municipalities in this area to be off-takers for that. And what does that mean? Is Luther-Beldon Farms has about 300 cows. They do produce a lot of manure, and there's also food waste that's associated with that. And if you know anything about a compost pile, that produces a lot of energy and a lot of heat. Therefore, electricity can be created off of that. Most people think of maybe community solar as being a project similar to this. So, this is, it's called anaerobic digestion. So, we are looking for off-takers for this. I think that the town of Hatfield would be a great candidate for this. The big leading, kind of why you might, why you folks should be interested in this is you get a guaranteed 15% savings on your energy bill. So, you know that your power is coming from right down the street, and also you get the 15% savings. We have a similar program going on in Granville, where that's Rockwood Farms, and the town of Granville is getting, 100% of their power is coming from that farm in their town. Once again, they're getting 15% savings. So, the next step for this is if you folks are interested, I can obviously go through the, we are, you're already a customer of ours, so I already know what, we already know what your usage is and what your, how much you're spending every month and every year in your electricity bill. So, I'm happy to go through what that savings would be. I did, I think for the town of Hatfield, it would be about $15,000 annual savings, and if the, if the schools want to be part of it, I believe it was, I think it's like $26,000 it would be saving, about $20,000 it'd be saving.
Twenty eight thousand.
Twenty eight thousand, okay, that was off. But about $28,000 in savings every year, and once again, everybody knows where that power is coming from, right down the street. And the next step here is, would be to sign a non-binding LOI. It's a letter of interest, and that would just say, when the project is up and running, we can go back and discuss it. So, if you have any questions on that, I'm more than happy to answer them. Probably another thing that I want to talk about as well is a lot of your, a lot of your residents have also gone solar, either, I mean, you have Northeast Solar, which is a huge partner of ours right in town, and we, every quarter, we have a sale of these net meter, oh, sorry, of these SRECs. So, for every 1,000 kilowatts that these residents produce, they produce 1 SREC, and that's sold on the open market. We broker them for them, so we go out and we sell, and we manage it. And then, we also get a 5% commission fee, which is lower than most other folks are getting on the market. They can call us up in our Northampton office and ask any questions. So, once again, they're keeping their energy dollars local. So, that's another thing that I really want to thank the, thank the town for promoting. And so, we're doing a lot around renewables. We're doing a lot around power, and it helps with all of our, all of our not-for-profit services. And then, we also, I don't know, if you want to start talking a bit more about our purchasing, but I'm happy to answer any other questions on that.
I think one quick question I had made was just, when is that going to be up and operational, or approximately?
Yeah, so I believe it's December 2017.
At the end of this year, or the beginning of?
Yes, and it's obviously all dependent on whatever source is doing in terms of interconnection. So, we are thinking it's going to be anywhere between December 2017 to maybe February 2018. And that's when the power would kick on, and that's when you would start seeing that savings.
And were we or, and/or the schools to sign up, is there contractual agreement length of?
Sure. Yes, so it's 10 years. So, you get your power for 10 years from the program, and every 6 months, we go, we can go back into the bills and see, does this is working?
Right.
You're obviously always going to get the 15% discount. It's not dependent on how much the system's producing. And also, a beautiful thing about this, these kind of projects is it's, there's little variation, so you're, hate to say it, but the cows keep producing, and the electricity keeps producing, so you know what the bill is going to be every single month. Yeah.
Unlike solar net metering, sometimes you can have a big flip. So, in the summer, you're going to have, you know, a negative bill, but in the winter, you start eating away at it. And this one is going to be, it's more stable. So, I think it's actually better for municipalities who kind of need that stability over time.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that, as you can imagine, these types of projects and programs, and including solar, are very, becoming very popular now, when everyone's sort of knocking on the door. So, for me personally, I think there's a lot of digestion that needs to take place in the different programs we're offering. That's all I would say, because they all, they all come with some sort of a discount and a group rate, and that's awesome. I think that collectively, though, we need to, you know, soon, sort of sit down and go through this, because we've got some solar projects that we're becoming involved with, and now this, so that, just kind of being upfront, saying, you know, we, it sounds great, but I think we just need to do our own homework internally to figure out ultimately which program will make sense for the residents, or, well, for the town and for the schools. I know we already are taking advantage of it, so, of the existing power, so.
I have a question.
Yep.
Sinead, you said that this would be for 10 years. So, does the COG have a contract or a term tied to a contract with these individuals, these farms?
So, we are.
Is that for 10 years?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, okay.
Yeah, it's for 10 years as well. So, we, I like to kind of, with these projects, is we are vetting the, we're vetting, we're vetting the projects. So, everything from community solar to wind, to also these anaerobic digestion projects. And so, we're making sure that we're making the partnerships, and we know that, yes, we're going to probably be with them to 10, to almost 20 years in some cases. And then, like I said, every 6 months, we go back and we evaluate whether or not, you know, is the allocation working for the municipality? Is it working for the business? And then, we make steps there. Yeah.
Well, we would handle the billing and the customer service and kind of be a go-between, between the end user, in this case, the town, and the project itself, to make sure that everything is smooth. So, you know, the COG would be a continuous partner in the contract.
Okay. And again, you referenced the 19 accounts, and those are just the municipal buildings? Correct, right?
Oh, yes, yes. So, those are the municipal buildings, and there's 2 for the.
For the school building, right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
When you speak of 15% discount, 15% off of what the current rate is that you're selling it at, or 15% of what we're previously getting energy at, 15% off of what?
15% off of the, over time, the current utility rate, all in, so both the distribution and the supply side.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
But you're talking what you're offering, not 15% off of what Eversource or Nelsa offers. You're talking 15% off of what the COG has available through their community program.
No, 15, so it's going to be a 15% discount off of the entire electricity bill, based on the default rate by Eversource, in this case, for the term of those 10 years. So, the default rate changes every 6 months.
It's variable every 6 months.
But remember, the top half is almost constant, the top half being the distribution side. So, it's a 15% discount off of the distribution side and the utility default rate.
But, okay, but it's a variable rate, though.
Well, it's variable, because it.
Every 6 months, yeah.
They change it every 6 months. However, you locked in, in this case, a 3-year contract with Hampshire Power at a lower rate, so you're getting even more than a 15% discount, because you're actually paying less on your supply side, but you get the 15% off of the higher number, in this case, the default rate. And we can go over all that in more detail with pretty pictures and graphics, because I know sometimes the words get a little weedy.
Yeah. And it does come down to sometimes just looking at the electricity bill.
Yeah, right.
Because a lot of, I mean, you see there's.
See the numbers in front of you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But the other models are, someone will say, we're going to sell you power at, say, 10 cents for 10 years, and they'll base that off, they'll say, well, power's going to go up, you know, over time. I don't know, maybe, maybe it'll, maybe it'll go down. But this way, it's pegged to whatever the utility says will be the rate, and so that's why we can guarantee that 15% for the term of the full 10 years. And with that, I'll let Ellen jump in and talk a little bit of Quacker's purchasing. We can come back to the power, or we can set up a special meeting and talk about it in more detail.
Thank you.
So, I'm Ellen Batchelder, and I'm the Director of Procurement Services at the COG. I joined last year in the purchasing department. So, I want to call your attention to the left side of the folder, because that's where the purchasing info is. I put in there, it's our newest sell sheet, which is pretty much just a summary sell sheet of the various, we list some of the bids and what we have to offer on that sell sheet, so you can take a look at that. The worksheet right behind there is, there's actually 2 sets. The top one is set up for the town of Hatfield. It's highlighted at the top, and what this shows is, it's basically a quarter-to-quarter comparison of the bids that the town of Hatfield participated in during fiscal 2015 and 2016. This will be updated once we get the FY2017 data that's coming in now, as reported by vendors. So, I wanted to just call attention to a couple of areas on this, on this sheet, excuse me, as you look over to the grand total columns way over to the right-hand side. And we did see a fairly significant decline in the use of the bids from the, between the 2 years. And then, I specifically just, you know, I went through and I looked at, you know, where some made some large, large changes. Diesel fuel and salt both declined significantly from '15 to '16. '15 was the year of that, the really rough winter. So, we see that with most of the town reporting that we do, is that those 2 seem to go down. One of the good things when I'm talking about, talking about salt that I want to mention to you, because Hatfield does participate in the cooperative salt bid, our pricing this year that we were able to secure for 2017, fiscal 2017, was significantly less than what you were, would have been able to buy on the state contract. So, just as a reference, like Hatfield's primary supplier for salt was American at 6601 per ton, and that compared to the state bid through Eastern Salt at 7636 per ton. So, that was, that was a big, big difference there, so you were able to save some money by utilizing, utilizing the bid. Additionally, what I did. Additionally, what I did right before I headed up here is I was just looking at the fiscal year '17 numbers to date. And again, a lot of the reporting even for quarter three hasn't come through from the vendors yet. But at this point to date, the town has purchased $251,400 worth of supplies and services. So, you can see as you go down that you, the town does participate in a fair number of the bids. I went back to look at some of the highway estimate sheets that we received from the highway folks annually. And, you know, I just saw that the numbers, it looks like, you know, as projects are approved for one fiscal year to another, that's where we see some of the big jumps in, in some of the highway items such as especially hot mixed asphalt. That one had a, you know, it doesn't look like too much paving went on during fiscal year 2016. But already in fiscal 2017, it's up to $146,000. So, you saw kind of a, kind of a big bump up there. Additionally, I had met with Marlene back a few months ago. And one of the things we've been working on is making sure that the bid notifications, any kind of correspondence goes out to a pretty wide variety of folks here in Hatfield, including herself as well as your town accountant. So, we're really trying to make sure that everyone is aware of all the bids as they come up when we're requesting estimates for different supplies and services. And I feel like we've, you know, we get the information from Hatfield in a very timely manner, so we appreciate that. And, you know, we'll continue to work with the town. One of the, one of the items that we added this year, we did a survey of the Highway DPW folks to see if there were other items that we might be able to add to the selection. There's about 18 different highway services and products, and we added a tree services bid. I'm not sure, I meant to look to see if Hatfield gave us some estimates on that. But we were just, we just opened up the awards for the highway items last week. So, that one is a bid that, you know, is a new bid for us for highway. And we're always looking for suggestions, you know, if there's other areas of products and services that we could, you know, do a cooperative bid for, we're more than willing to help out with that. So, right behind, behind the town information, I put in there also the purchasing history for the schools. And you can see that the Hatfield Public Schools, they utilize the general art and general school supplies bid quite significantly. Those are some pretty broad bids. They encompass about 1,600 different items. I think we might even have one of the teachers, I think there was someone from Hatfield who came and helped us with the award back in March because we actually get samples in, the teachers have a chance to go through these products and take a look at, take a look at them. So, we appreciate that. The second page behind each of these, each of these reports provides a, an estimated savings picture. So, and these are based upon vendor-reported percentages that they've given to us. So, you can see your estimated savings for the town for fiscal 2016 was in the area of approximate, you know, just shy of $25,000 on the bids that the town participated in. So, in addition to these bids that are listed, I know we also have Hampshire IT that the town participates in with Perigis. I believe we have, it's eight participating towns now, eight or eight, I believe. So, we appreciate the fact that you're utilizing that service. And any questions that come up, please feel free to call me. My card's right there.
I just have one question. I've heard a lot of good things that you're doing, but we have had some questions on the IT services. So, I was just wondering if you're making any headway in addressing some of our concerns with the IT stuff.
Yeah, and I think we had a meeting, we had a meeting with Marlene, and we talked about that. And it was my understanding that things were improving and that the communication was improving and some expectation setting was improving. But we're certainly here to always light a fire under them if we hear anything to the contrary. We are hoping to have more periodic reporting from Perigis as well as some information sharing among the current eight participating towns so that you can know what Orange is doing, what Hadley is doing, so that communication can maybe help everyone share a little bit more information. But other than that, it was my understanding that they put a special manager in charge and that he was going to be working closely with the town to make sure that some of the speed bumps that you were experiencing were flattened out and that going forward, it was more of an enjoyable experience for all concerned.
That's correct. Does the council of governments meet with, with Perigis on occasion?
Yes, yep, yep, we definitely, I mean, certainly annually. We've been meeting a little bit more than that recently as they, you know, they changed kind of their service model and their internal structure. So, we wanted to figure out what all that meant for not only us, but for the towns as well and how we could continue to be partnered with them. And that's where we came up with the idea of a periodic newsletter and having the towns, you know, share some information. So, hopefully, we'll be pushing them to produce some content for that soon.
Okay. If I may, in the future also, not tonight, obviously, but just going over their pricing, I'd gone over the last two years' reports and from the HCOG. And I believe it said, we saved $400 by going through Perigis. And then I saw the projections for the next year, it was over 4,000 you would save. And I don't know how that could be projected, but at some point, I'd like to go over the cost because we have, I've compared it to a few other things, and it does seem very pricey for us, as well as the gasoline. We've got all the financial figures from the accountant, and our gasoline last year was through the roof. I mean, it was, I believe, 3.90 a gallon. I mean, Snow Go Down the Street sells it for 2.29 right now. And so, I mean, you know, it's, I'm looking at on here gasoline, I think you said we saved, what, 6%, but I don't see how we could have saved 6% when that's a lot more expensive than the pump price. You know, so, you know, it depends what you're comparing it to.
Right, and one of the things I'd like to-
And that's a big issue, you know, with me. It's not, you're saving 6% it says, but it doesn't say 6% of what or $400, apparently it's $400 of what or who you're comparing to. So, I'd like to know how you arrive at those numbers.
We don't meet the consumption, though. The estimated consumption, then you're, you have to use that up. And that's what happens with gasoline.
But not necessarily with Perigis, you know, it's two different things. I'm giving you two examples, yeah, two different things.
On a Perigis side, I don't think, we don't project savings. We look back at the, at a fiscal year.
Yeah, it said 400 one year and then 4,086 for the second year. And that's like, that's like 10 times as much, and that seems a jump, but I don't know where that came, you know, where it came from. It doesn't explain it. It just gives a percentage, you know, that you're saving, but it doesn't say how you're saving it or-
Well, the Perigis savings is calculated by taking the rate that you pay versus the rate that they charge everyone, all their retail customers, and then multiply by the number of hours that you have.
There, right, but not compare against other companies or what the going rate is.
It was a competitive bid several years ago. Perigis was the best and cheapest vendor at the time. Every once in a while, we do kind of a, I guess I'll call that a soft bid where we do compare the rate that the members are paying versus what we're seeing out there from comparable companies that are offering similar services. And I would say they're still very competitive compared to, I mean, they're not going to be the, you know, someone living in his basement doing it part-time. But against the big companies, I'd say that the rate that the Hampshire IT customers are paying is still competitive.
Okay, well, the prices I got from them and then from another large company were a little different. But I'd like to discuss that at another time.
Sure, we can do that. Why don't we, while we brought it up, just speak to the gasoline for a minute? Just so everyone who's here and on TV, you know, has a feel for, for the cost and why the cost is what it is. So, if I'm not mistaken, we were under a multi-year contract. Is that something, Phil or Ellen, is that right?
We were under an overestimated contract. That's what happened.
That's my understanding, yeah.
So, for the last, last fiscal year and this fiscal year, we estimate our fuel and gasoline at zero so we can catch up to our estimate. So, we have to exhaust that contract from 15.
That was my understanding.
Right, which at the time, gasoline was more expensive than, than what it is, much more expensive than what it is now, almost double. So, you know, at the time, when you're into those contracts, this is what happens, right? So, we save some money for some years, and now we're paying more than people see at the pump. But the reality is, it's, that's part of the-
When the fuel was over $4 a gallon, we never paid that.
Right. But it is high, I mean, it's high. There's no doubt about it.
I believe it was $10,000 per year. We only used eight gallons.
But I think after this, after this round, I think we're caught up. I think we'll be exhausted through all our contractual obligation.
Yeah, because I got the number from Adam, I think it was, within the last two weeks. And I, I called him back and I said, I just want to make sure. Because I knew that he had estimated zero for last year. I said, it's still at zero. And he, yeah, he confirmed that to me.
Until we catch up through the contract.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I'll wrap up real quick because I know you have a busy agenda. Obviously, you guys have also taken advantage of our regional accounting program. And if you ever need that again, just let us know. We also have Hampshire Web, which is a discounted website design service through virtual towns and schools. So, if you're interested in upgrading your website, please let us know there as well. On the IT side, we're also looking at various cloud-based applications. I don't have anything to bring to market yet, but that is something that we're working on. On our philanthropic, philanthropic side, geez, I can't say that today. We have the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. You have about 21 over-55 volunteers volunteering in Hatfield, providing about 2,700 hours of volunteer service through the RSVP program. You've also taken advantage of the Tobacco-Free Partnership Program that's housed in the HCOG. Some things that we're working on now is bringing more regional workshops. We had four regional workshops last year, plus the workshops that we hosted through the Hampshire County Selectmen's Association, which I always encourage you to attend if you can. So, we'll be working with Bernie Kubiak, the ex-town manager of Deerfield and Hadley, to work on more workshops. Bernie is also our grant writer and administrator. So, he's happy to come in and work with you and explore any potential state or federal grant opportunities that he could assist you with. And he is also our Metagrant administrator as well. So, I saw you had an MOU to sign. I don't know if that's with PBPC or us. But Bernie Kubiak also does that on behalf of like seven towns now throughout Western Massachusetts. A couple of other things we're working on, we're looking at a human resource bid. So, something that would allow towns to more cost-effectively update their personnel policies and also deal with any human resource issues or concerns that may arise, hiring, firing, trouble employees, disciplinary action, et cetera. So, we're looking to have that by the end of the summer. And we're putting together the scope now. If you have any thoughts or ideas on that, please let Ellen or I know, and we'll incorporate that into the bid. And again, we're here to also hear from you if there's anything else that we can do better or if there's a new program or service that you'd be interested in exploring with us.
Great. Do you have any other questions, Cindy? Or Ed, did you have any questions?
I'm good.
I think the, thank you first off to the three of you for coming in, in the quick overview. Your right time is somewhat limited. No, you, not your first time, I can tell. But I appreciate the explanation, and I think the townspeople and the people watching appreciate the explanation of some of the things that we see and that we hear. And I think the electricity down at Beldon Farm is something that we would definitely be interested in to, finding out more information and really doing our own internal look at the various programs that are, that are being brought forward for, on behalf of the town and the schools and the residents, actually, for that matter. So, we'll, we'll be reaching out to you for that, for sure. Great, all set? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next topic on the agenda, excuse me, is simply to announce that there will be a special election on June 20, Tuesday, June 27. And it's a single ballot, and that is to vote on the debt exclusion for the $740,000 water transmission line project that at town meeting, the votes were there and to approve that. But because it's a debt exclusion, it also needs a ballot question. So, we do need the voters to, to vote on that as well. So, it's Tuesday, June 27. It's to continue the Water Main Transmission Line Project. And it will cost, just so people who weren't at town meeting understand this, the average single-family home assessed at $300,000 would be an increase of $45 annually for a period of 10 years. So, it's a debt exclusion. When the debt's paid off, rate comes back down. Basically, it's $15 roughly per $100,000 evaluation of your home. So, that's, that's where that was derived. So, town meeting passed it by two-thirds vote. It needs a simple majority at the ballot box in order to continue the Water Main Project up to Gore Avenue, which would get the piping out of the swamp and up to Gore Avenue.
It's really the most critical piece of the whole project. We came down from the reservoir, down Rocks Road, under 5, under 91, under the railroad tracks, and to Brockway and Smith. But from Brockway and Smith to Gore Avenue, the pipe is exposed in the Mill River. And it's a transite cement pipe, which water and cement don't mix too well. So, that's the most critical piece. So, I encourage everybody to come out and vote. The chairman said that town meeting approved it unanimously, so it's a vile project to the town.
Thank you, Phil. Next on my agenda is the Hatfield Housing Authority Parking Proposal. And I see we have a couple of folks here from the Hatfield Housing Authority. So, welcome, Mike and Mike.
Yeah, thank you very much for having us. My name is Michael Mendick. I'm the Executive Director of the Hatfield Housing Authority. I've been there for about 30 years, close to it. And ever since I got there, parking has become more and more of an issue. And I think this year, you know, the parking in the rear with the snowstorms and stuff like that, you know, we put a little burden on the town, which we appreciate all the help that you guys supplied us, and thank you very much. And the Board of Selectmen has requested us to see if we can come up with some type of alternatives for parking, to see if we can solve some of the problems that we have there. And we've looked at different types of solutions that we might have. You know, we do own land on the westerly side of the buildings, okay, which abuts the stream in the rear. We have a very narrow accessway between our westerly building and the neighbors. And most of our land is located in wetlands in the back. You know, we did consider that as a possibility, but, you know, upon talking with engineers from Department of Housing and Community Development, they didn't figure it'd be a feasible project with runoff, with lowlands, you know, that border the stream in the back. And also, we'd have runoff problems going to the neighbors. So, you know, I asked him for different types of alternatives that he might have. And I think I presented the board here with a couple of different alternatives that we're proposing to the town here for consideration. And, you know, the alternative, which we feel is probably the most viable, would be angled parking on Main Street in the Tree Belt, okay? And with this proposal, we'd probably have around 11 extra parking spaces, which would help us tremendously. Right now, we only have 25 parking spots at the facility. We have 44 apartments. And our population seems like it's getting to be younger because we are elderly and handicapped, and we're getting more handicapped people in there, and therefore, we're anticipating more cars. So, you know, we're looking at the town here to see if they can give us maybe a hand here, you know, in helping us, at least giving us permission to maybe provide extra parking spaces here with these angled parking spots. That would be, the tenants would be backing out into Main Street. They wouldn't be crossing over the sidewalk. One other proposal that the architect drew up would be to cross over the actual sidewalk and have the parking spaces against the buildings, okay, on the Main Street side. But that poses a problem because you have kids going to school, you have people pushing baby carriages and whatever. And, you know, you hate to say it, but the elderly probably aren't, you know, as well-equipped as us. aren't, you know, as well-equipped as us, you know, with their faculties backing up and watching out and being careful and stuff. And heaven forbid, if they backed up and hit a child going to school or somebody pushing a baby carriage or something. So we're kind of looking at the alternative, which we think is probably going to suit, you know, the housing authority best, and maybe blend in with the center of town here too. So, you know, that's what we're proposing to the town right now.
I just have a couple of questions. Once you park in that tree belt on Main Street, it becomes town property, then what is the prevent down the road, the people across the street wanting parallel parking, congregational church wanting parallel parking, town hall wanting parallel parking? I'm just trying to be concerned with the characteristics of Main Street the way it is now. So my first concern is, parallel parking on Main Street, I mean, what's going to happen down the road with that? I know you're looking for an alternative. I know this was option one, but what did you get? Like two other options that weren't viable, or?
The other option, Ed, what we talked about was, you know, putting the parking against the buildings.
Okay.
Okay? And so we have to cross over the sidewalk to do it. We're going to have to have an entry going to that area, entry coming out. And I don't think we really have enough room to do that.
So what messes you up is the building in the middle, the wrecked building. That's what messes everything up right there.
The existing building, you know, the actual apartments.
Right.
Just think back, I'm trying to think back, do you remember when that was built, back then?
It was built in the early 70s.
Right. And I remember reading in the newspaper back then, believe it or not, that people that lived there couldn't own motor vehicles. They couldn't have pets, they couldn't own motor vehicles. Is that in the charter or anything like that? Whereas if you go for funding for this now, are they going to say, "But your charter says you can't own motor vehicles"?
I can't see how.
Yeah, is it still in there?
Right now, I mean-
That way, it says that they can't own them?
Service animals, pets, they're allowed.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that. And I guess, I guess, I'm not saying this isn't a good idea, but my only concern is from public safety. Right now, coming down School Street, about eight out of 10 vehicles blow that stop sign every 10, eight of them blow it. You know, and to look, I'm just concerned that would block the view of the road, number one. Number two, anybody backing out, like it's elderly, they're backing out into the crosswalk that comes across from the store. So they're backing out into a cross, when I looked at it today, it looked like, you know, the crosswalk comes right about into the middle where that would be. And I talked to a representative of the police department this morning, and they feel that there's enough spaces behind the town hall, that's not working, the ones behind the town hall.
Well, I mean, you know, when we talked to the selectmen last, okay, they suggested that we try to come up with an alternative on our property. And that's, you know, that's what we're doing. You know, we're trying to come up with an alternative here with, you know, that's going to, that's going to help alleviate some of the parking problems we have behind the town hall, shifting of cars and doing whatever. We're trying to do something more long-range, that's what we're trying to propose.
Now, you know where that picket fence is out front? Is there any way to make that a double row for parking there, if you took that fence out? Or that wouldn't work either? Or did you look at that, you know?
Well, the only thing about that is that we're-
You'd still be backing into the street.
Unless there's enough room to have the double row, you know, and have space to go around the whole thing, you know what I mean? Both sides? Because it looked like there might be just enough for that.
I don't know if there's enough room.
No.
You know, and then you'd have the people backing into a narrower road to School Street as compared to Main Street, which is wider, you have kind of a breakdown lane, kind of sort of.
With a parking garage, there's no other good alternative there, yeah.
Sure, let's do it.
I think there's a utility pole there too, right?
There's a utility pole close to the corner.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So actually, so Mike is absolutely correct, the Board of Selectmen did ask that the Board of Directors and the Administrator, you know, come back, bring a proposal. You've done that. My personal opinion, and I think it goes along with Ed and Cindy, is just being on Main Street to, you know, to take away that grassy area. So having said that, I don't know, I guess my suggestion would be to keep, we need to keep this going, because we don't want it to be winter and all of a sudden, nothing happened again, right? So we're heading down the right path, I think, is have, you know, meet with Phil and the police chief and the fire chief, and bring this option forward and say, "Here's what we came up with. We've got flood zones, we don't have enough room to maneuver in the back. Here's what we have, doesn't seem to be getting a lot of traction from the Board of Selectmen. Is there something else collectively we can come up with for an idea or a plan for a dozen long-term parking places?" I mean, that's how I feel about it. I don't want to say no, and I don't want to just say yes. I mean, I think there's got to be more conversation about it, to be perfectly honest.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, of course.
Is that property, just to the west of it, is that for sale right now?
Yeah.
Is there anything there that would help out? Do you want anything, a portion of that or anything?
By buying the property?
Yeah, a portion of that.
I mean, you could buy a portion of it, because it would make it less non-conforming than it is.
No, well, not purchase a portion, but what's that?
Where are you looking?
Okay.
To the west?
To the west of the building. I think that property's for sale.
Oh, really?
And I just didn't know if there is anything, a lease agreement with that or anything else for parking or anything like that? Not likely, there's no extra room?
I don't really see that as being a possibility, because it's kind of a narrow strip in between that house there and our buildings.
This building serves as what your rec center, and what else does that building serve as?
Has a laundry, has a community room, and the office.
Okay. But I know it'd be, it'd probably be financially difficult to put the building here, and then you have all that parking in here. That'd be almost probably difficult to do, right?
Be difficult and very expensive.
Oh.
And I think it would change the whole character of, you know, looking at it, because right now, it does look kind of quaint, whatever. If you make a big black area in the front, I mean, you're probably talking-
But what does the federal funding allow you to do with that building?
We're state-funded, we're not federal, we're state.
Oh, okay, you're state-funded?
Yes.
So you're depending on whatever money the state are providing for you.
And I mean, we haven't even proposed this to the state. I mean, before I propose this to the state, I want to see if the town is willing to work with us.
That makes sense.
And to see if we can, you know, come to some type of agreement or understanding or whatever, before I go to them for the money, and they say, "Well, you know, we don't have the permission to do it," so.
Right, right. It makes sense, and we appreciate you bringing something forward.
I mean, you did, you did what we asked, you brought back a proposal, but that proposal is now under discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, unless the selectmen have, you know, some other ideas on if the town would give us some type of extra parking in the back here or whatever, I mean, that's, that's an option we're willing to listen to do, you know?
That might be the next step for us to consider.
That was the police department's suggestion this morning, yeah.
Got to have options.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know what I mean? So it's ABC, 1, 2, 3, and then collectively-
I mean, we're kind of limited on the ground space that we have there.
Understood, Mike, yeah, sure.
But this helps us understand better what you're up against.
Right. You know, and like I said, you know, our population is getting younger, we're the people having more vehicles, and, you know, the problem I see is getting only worse in the future, so.
Do you have any other questions that you wanted to ask?
No, I'm just drawing a picture where I think it could go, no.
All I was going to say is thank you, and if you have other questions of us, please feel free to ask them. I think the next step is for us to once again talk about, to present this proposal to the fire chief, the police chief, emergency management who's here, and the DPW director, and have a conversation about it, and then include you guys, and figure out what we, collectively, what we think might be the best idea, and see how we can make it work. We certainly understand the situation that the residents are in. We understand that the lack of land situation that you're in, so it's just a matter of trying to come up with an idea, try to make it a-
Sure.
-best-case scenario.
How many spots are you looking for?
Well, with the proposal that, you know, I put before the selectmen, Phil, we're talking like 11 spots on the Main Street side.
Okay. Well, that helps, you know, that helps for other options.
It'll help, although we still will have our winter parking.
Yeah, we know that's another situation or scenario.
That still exists.
Well, you're really going to be in a worse shape this year if the building across the street is sold for winter park.
Yeah, as a reminder for people, the center, the former center school, behind it was utilized for parking for some of the residents at Kapewalk. And once that, once it's sold and the process begins to rehabilitate, I'm assuming that option is gone, so, hence the parking, the additional parking dilemma, so. All right.
We still have to clear a lot.
Yeah. Let's do this first. We know winter's wrapped in there somewhere, but, you know, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Do you guys have anything more for us?
Yeah, you know, the board wants to talk to the, you know, police department and fire department and highway and see, you know, what else they might be able to come up with or whatever.
Well, I think those are the folks that, you know, their inputs are valuable, actually.
Right.
Kind of their lot to get in and out of, especially in an emergency situation, so.
Exactly.
All right, all right, we'll do that, and then we will reach out to you, let you know what we think the next step is, or want to get together and have a conversation.
Sounds good.
I appreciate you bringing this forward and sharing this with us and showing what-
Yeah, thank you very much for, you know, listening to our proposed plans, so, you know, hopefully we can work something out, go from there.
All right, sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
We are, we're skipping the next item for now, simply because it's, we'll be meeting with the Board of Assessors in a little while, I don't think they're coming in for a few minutes.
They're not available until 7:15.
Till 7, oh, okay, so.
Around 7:15, so if we can just-
Yep, so we'll just go to topic number seven, which is a financial management update.
Since our last update with the accountant and treasurer, I met with the treasurer last week, the August reconciliation's still incomplete, and that's a result of the transition of staff in the office and just, you know, responding to people's needs that come into the office. Laura Lee is away, she will be back, and we'll pick up August when she returns. She did hand off July, the month of July, to the accountant, I believe it was last Tuesday or Wednesday, Wednesday. Also provided a copy of a proposed work plan, it's the taxpayer assistance program. This is a program that the Division of Local Services implemented a couple of years ago. And we did sign up for this last year, and we will, we being the financial management team, we're going to, when Laura Lee returns, we're going to sit down and go over these proposed dates. As you see, the prior year, those are the dates that we met, those are not the dates that we had actually set for ourselves. So, once we meet and review these dates, I'll report back to the board. And I've asked Derek and Laura Lee both to be in attendance for this meeting, and as I mentioned, Laura Lee's on vacation. But Derek is here to give an update on progress in his office.
Well, Laura Lee hinted off the, I'm assuming it's the bank activity. There was no proof to prove out that it balances to the general ledger. I've asked in the past, basically in January and then in April, that there's about $55,000 worth of information that, just taxes. I need to know what type of tax so I can, we can classify it and put it on the general ledger. Then there's just some timing issues that we need to take care of. I have to sit down with her and hopefully explain to her that we booked some of this revenue in the previous fiscal year. So it's basically cherry-sheep money, the, the timing difference when it actually comes in the bank, but it actually hit the general ledger the previous month, so we need to take that into account. I think once we get that put together, I know I'm missing some turnovers, this was back before we started Zobrio, where we're still doing the old manual type of turnovers. I know from the collector, I'm missing about six or seven. Police department, I'm missing a few, just for gun permits, you know, and there's probably a little bit here and there, but that shouldn't, if the treasurer has a copy, then I might at least get a copy from her and know if the department doesn't have a copy. So just be a little running around, trying to get the paperwork together, back the numbers up, and then sit down with the treasurer and straighten out those, getting that taxes classified out, and then getting the timing adjustments put on. Then we take that final analysis, and then we have to put it into the proof and make sure that it balances out between the accountant's balance, the treasurer's balance, and the bank balance. Once we put those timing adjustments in, they should all be the same balance. And that's our proof that what we're putting on the books is actually balancing out between everything.
So, if I may, Derek, so to that point, the only, it sounds like, the only month that that has actually taken place for, from beginning to end and everything matching up, for the, or at least for the most part, matching up, is July of 2016, which is the first month of fiscal year 17, which is what we're in right now, is that?
That's what we're trying to get to line up, yes.
Okay, so, so we, we need to, because not having this completed in a timely fashion, and I think I'm just saying it out loud, but this affects everything down the road, right? So, you know, we need to, collectively, you know, as a town, we need to hit the ground running when everybody's back and start knocking some of these off, because as a selectman, I'm not planning on going through this again next year. So as far as I'm concerned, and I'll have the conversation with those people that aren't here tonight, because they're on vacation, you know, this isn't all hands on deck, and we need to, July is fine, and it's a step in the right direction, but we need to continue forward, it's May, it's June. This is no refle, you know, you're the only one here, but I'm just saying it out loud. So, but just so everybody's, you know, knows my feeling, you know, we should be much further along, as anybody would attest to, in having these reconciliations completed. I'm sure it's not an exact month-to-month, you know, I'm sure there's always a few months lag by the time, you've got to get everything.
A variation of, yeah.
I get it. But I'd like to think that in the next few weeks, we're going to get, we're going to knock off August, a few weeks after that, September, and then everyone's going to learn from what we've just gone through on a monthly basis, and going to be able to speed up the process and become more efficient, utilize those systems, Zobrio and the other one, to start rolling and knocking these things out, because we're going to be having potentially a town meeting in the fall for some capital projects that we want to fund, but we need all of these preliminary accounting efforts completed, so that the state and Department of Revenue and everyone who's looking at those things knows that we're compliant and up to date with our submittals.
We did discuss possibly some temporary support to try to make sure that that happens, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, that's something we got to discuss, right?
Yeah.
And the other, the other item, I'm trying to think, I know the collector's side of the house is 30 hours, the treasurer's side of the house is 25 hours. So I don't know if there's, if you guys have a certain day that you get together to discuss stuff, or, you know, how that's working out. But right now, I would say we need probably a little bit of temporary support to get us to that point, and then review it again. bit of temporary support to get us to that point and then review it again to see how to prevent it from happening again.
I couldn't agree more.
Is that feasible, that it'll move along that fast? Is it possible?
It depends how quickly the treasurer and I can exchange the information. You know, I, you know, if I have questions or something and I need something answered, it's, and I send the question out, I can't do, really do anything until those get answered. We have, I mean, $55,000 in just taxes doesn't, I can't even start balancing because I know I'm off in any number of those tax receivable accounts. It's just a giant unknown.
It comes down to making the time for the two of them to sit down and go over, over the issues or any outstanding issues.
Well, that should be something that's, you know, like once a week or once every two weeks or, or something.
Yes.
There should be a defined time to do that.
It should be routine.
Well, and I think that that is the ultimate goal, but in the meantime, we're playing catch-up and we need to get moving, so I would agree with Ed.
And I understand we've been being catch-up for over a year now, we're better, so it's time to, let's catch up and then take it from there.
Right, right, so, yes, agreed. You know, we do, we need to, we need to catch up and we need to have the process in place on a go-forward basis, but I think right now catching up is the most important thing to get, to get our ducks in a row, and then, and then we can put the process into place on a go-forward basis, what makes sense and how are we just going to not be in this position again.
So bring some temporary support in to catch up, get it, get it up to speed so we meet the DOR timelines and, and we're on target.
Agreed.
That's my opinion.
Out loud.
No, yeah, out loud. No, I'm just saying, is that feasible, is that, even with all that, is it, do you think that can happen by October? That's my question.
I think it's a lot. You know, with the extra help and, and, you know, a lot of it's just getting, getting the numbers into a spreadsheet to analyze. Once you have it there and you can, you know that you're matching up in these accounts, you're not matching up in these accounts, then you can start chasing that why it doesn't match. It just, you know, it depends how, if they all match up right out of the gate, you're good to go. We've got to get to that proof and make sure that we've proven out between those three balances. That's, that's what is basically our justification for putting the revenues onto the books because we know it all matches, it's in the right spot, and then that makes the end of the year a lot easier, because once we get all the revenues on the books, we still have to close out all the funds, so I still have to reconcile all the funds, make sure that the expenses and revenues are.
So, July is reconciled, but when did that?
July is not reconciled.
No, excuse me, August was?
August is not, nothing is reconciled yet.
Nothing is, okay.
Right, close.
It's, we, we're starting the process in July, we have, we have some information, but we've got to, it's a back and forth process where she handed me some information, I went through it, I found some issues.
It's a.
It's a back and forth.
So she handed off the July cash book to you?
Correct.
And so now you're trying to agree with it?
Yeah, I'm finding some issues, so I'm going to hand some stuff back to her, she'll fix that, reproduce the cash book, send it back to me, and I do the analysis again until we come to.
So, for your side of the house, when you get the information, how long does it take you to go through that and do what you've got to do for reconciliation?
About a day.
About a day, okay.
About a day to go through everything.
Provided.
That's to figure out where the issues are. Then the clock starts ticking and it just depends how quickly you can find, you know, the issue corrected.
So, on the average for, to be completed, what are you saying, three, four days by the time you go back and forth, or what?
Well, it hasn't been yet.
Well, it's hard to judge because they haven't actually done that yet.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, thank you for answering those questions, Derek. So, there is no doubt that that office, the treasurer, collector's office is busy handling public interest, you know, people paying bills and questioning, you know, whatever, stuff that comes with being a collector and a treasurer. And we had a, we had a person leave during, during the summer, or winter, what, spring?
Yeah, beginning of spring.
Abruptly, and it has, has since been backfilled. So, I guess the only thing I wanted to add to Ed's points, so, so people understand, the way I feel about this is the people that, if people come in to assist in this process, it's the people with the expertise in being a treasurer or a collector or an accountant just, just to help us get moving. It's not just going to be a warm body to answer the phone. The people we're bringing in, if that's the route we take, are going to have the expertise to get the job, that, the job done, and perhaps be able to, along the way, show some, use their expertise to help our staff along to learn various processes and get caught up on, you know, various systems and what have you. So, you know, I'm just concerned when we talk about having additional staff and the public's watching, you know, I just wanted to be clear that the staff we're referring to.
Temporary.
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 Professional.
Yes.
Staff with, with expertise in the field they'd be coming in for.
Qualified.
Yes.
Professional.
Yep, all those things, that's what I'm trying to say. So, you know, just so people understand, but I mean, to me, this is, this is a very big deal, we just need to get it behind us. And I think while we're doing that, it's going to show the Department of Revenue and the state that we're moving in the right direction and we're serious about taking care of what they're serious about telling us. We get it, you know, message loud and clear, and we're going to resolve this, so, that's all I had to say, I think, on it.
So, do we, we direct Marlene to look to, for some of that professional staff?
I would imagine so.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, we've had, we did have a study done, is that right?
They're wrapping that up soon.
They're wrapping up some recommendations and we'll see where that, where that lives.
What are the results of that being? They're hoping the end of this month.
So, next week?
Yes. Yeah, like you said, June, we're in June, yeah, just about.
And, you know, I don't want to be having this conversation in July. I mean, we can, we can talk about it, but there should have been progress made at, at that point, so, that's all. Do you guys have any other questions or comments for Derek?
No.
You have any other questions or comments?
No, that's.
All right, Derek, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, appreciate it. So, Genevieve's, looks like we're going to be getting our Department of Public Works to report from our DPW Director, Phil Genevieve.
First thing, topic eight, there should be three sewer water abatements requests. One for King Street, it was double billed, previous owner was billed $75 when the property was turned over, so we're looking to bait that on King Street.
Okay.
Then you have Turf Care, Turf Products on Bridge Street, they were being built since 2015 for a sewer, side of the water sewer, they were never hooked into the sewer. They have three separate buildings there, so all the meters that were red would build for sewer. The main building was not hooked up to the sewers, hooked up to the septic system. So, they were having trouble last week or a week before, and it was their septic system was failing, so they came in to, for the application to hook into the sewer, well, needless to say, they were being billed already for a sewer. So, we're looking to bait the sewer side of their water bill for '15, '16, '17.
Oh, three years' worth of.
Yes.
Wow.
Wow.
And they will.
But now we'll start actually.
Now they're tied into the sewer, so they know, they have a good estimate what their sewer bill, sewer uses is going to be, because they were tied in according to the meter.
Yep.
So, you know, I've.
Plan paying what you just paid.
I've talked to the plant.
Something like that, would they take, could we do a credit until they catch up? I mean, you know what I'm saying, instead of, do we have to give them a whole check?
Well, I talked to, you know, the town treasurer about that, the collector treasurer, and the cleanest way to do it is to bait the $6,000 and they pay the entrance fee for the $1,000 and then everything will be clean, it'll be a clean slate going forward.
Okay.
So, and the other one is the Pine, Pine Edge Way, my recommendation is that this does not meet the qualifications of an abatement.
Can we go one at a time?
Yeah.
Can I, we start with the $75 one, that's the easy one, okay.
That's easy, so, that's for 25 King Street.
Now, you, you have something that indicates they were double billed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. All right, so is there a motion to approve the abatement for 25 King Street in the amount of $75?
I'll make a motion to abate the double billing one on King Street for the $75.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to clarify, it's 75 on each side, so it's $150.
Thank you, yep. Yes. We didn't add the total down there.
Oh, yes, that's right, yes.
That's all right. Is there a motion for 59 Dwight Street, which was the business that's actually been on septic for three years, but we billed them their sewer fee anyways?
And we were at fault on this, right?
Correct, correct.
So, is there a motion in the amount, the billing for the three years is $6,023.72 total? So, entertain a motion?
Motion that it's accepted.
Is there a second?
Breaks my heart, but I'll say, yes, a second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we'll just, well, we could have a discussion about it, but it seems like this other one on Pine Edge Way didn't meet the qualifications for an abatement according to the DPW Director and the Water Department, so if we take, do we just take no action or do we actually refuse it?
You just have to, yeah, you would have to deny his abatement request.
Or deny it, okay, all right, so I don't know if anyone has a comment or question. It just seems like it's not meeting the timelines and the, the process for.
There's, there's too many questions on this one.
Okay.
Of what hasn't been met and, and what wasn't done, so.
All right, so I guess we would entertain a motion to deny the, the abatement request?
A second now.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
I'll sign off on these at the end of the meeting. Just an update on project status, if you would?
Sure. I know the big topic is Chestnut Street as far as the paving of Water Transmission Main. I talked to Lublow this morning, they are scheduling it within the next two weeks, he's checking his schedule under their contract, they have two options, either they do it themselves under a local contractor and can sub it out for the price that's in the contract. So, he's checking his schedule this week to see if he can get it done within the next two weeks. If not, he has guaranteed me that within two weeks it'll be done either by him or by a subcontractor, so, and we gave him a few recommendations on who we would like as a sub, so, that should be cleared up.
So, we're looking, let's just throw in an extra week, so by mid-June, that Chestnut Street should be all set?
Yeah, and it's both sides of, you know, both sides of that railroad track, you know, 180 feet both ways, curb to curb, so.
Thank you.
I'm just wandering down the road with all the different projects, I mean, I mean, we voted in a bunch at town meeting and we have some other stuff going on. There was, there was King Street with the manhole covers and we have the front steps and stuff. I'm just wondering if on the town website, we should have a link that gives us an update and a status on some of the stuff.
It's a great idea.
So, I'm wondering if that's possible, to get like a, like a spreadsheet or something and we just say, okay, this is the status, this has gone out to bid, or, or it's been awarded, or the project's going to start at this time, and this way the, the people in town have an understanding of where the projects are at, when they're going to start and when they're going to be completed.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, I don't see a problem doing that, I mean, you know, as soon as we, you know, as soon as we finalize, you know, I know there was quite, you know, a few projects that were passed at town meeting, it's just a matter of coordinating when the start time is and when the finish time is going to be.
Right.
You know, the priority, the priority to us is to do the front steps.
Yep.
That's the priority.
And where are we at with that right now?
We're waiting for the money. July, we, I mean, we can't start with July.
No, that came from free cash, so I had reported at the department head meeting last week that projects funded from free cash can, can start anytime.
Okay, so we can, yeah.
So, I touched base with you yesterday, I just, you know, I also want to submit, so we, we have some money available, what, $25,000 is going to be used for, for painting.
Right.
We did have an article on town meeting, annual town meeting warrant, received authorization. However, we'd still like to submit a grant to the Community Preservation Committee, and I just, I talked to Phil yesterday, I just need the detail, the budget, you know, costs and who's going to do work in-house as opposed to what would be contracted out.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the initial quote for the, for the steps was like $95,000 if it went out to a full bid. So, we, we're going to take some of that work in-house and we will do the demolition of the steps, you know, and we'll be doing the grading of the front entrance, and also if the town, if we buy the materials, because there's only two suppliers for the granite steps, so if, if the town buys the materials, we don't pay the over cost of a contractor coming in to do it. So, that's how we're going to work it, so that's why the $50,000 passed at town meeting was a good number, was a good number.
Right.
Because we have most of the pricing.
Well, how do you do your project tracking when you, when you have a project? How does, how does that sort of work with?
We keep spreadsheets of where we are, you know, we start with the initial budget and we'll keep, like, if we buy the materials, if we paid a contractor, if we pay the railing guy, so we keep that, all right.
I think the important, I think, actually, I think that's a good idea, you know, to have the projects where folks can see them. The only potential pitfall for that is if they're not updated.
Right.
So, that if somebody goes to look at something and it's from, you know, 2010, you know, it's only as good, obviously, as the information is, so, so we'll have to work out a process of sort of who, who's going to oversee inputting and updating this.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a month to month, you know, it doesn't have to be a month to month.
No.
I mean, we're going to start the project in July.
We're sending it out to bid, we're starting construction.
Estimated length of time, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And when the project's completed, we'll put that out there.
Yeah, that's all, I think if it's that simple.
We'll drive around and look anyway.
Yeah.
You know, and the other thing that H-Cod, you know, they were talking about was the bids of, they opened the bids of the pavement of the Blacktop and Warner Brothers again was granted it, so, just happened today that I met with Jimmy Hool from Warner Brothers about the Valley Street, South Street projects, so he measured it all out, so we're ready to go there, and that was last Chapter 90 money, so the money's in place there, and then I mentioned that we're going to do Bridge Street, so he went up there to measure that today for us, so.
Things are moving.
Things are going, things are going.
Okay. Thanks, anything else, or Cindy or Ed, do you have a question?
No, no, okay.
Oh, yeah, I just have one question, I guess it, first of all, Marlene, thank you for getting sort of more certification as purchasing officer for the town of Hatfield, because you're now up to speed on our projects and purchasing, so, do you actually review any other purchasing with Marlene to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements or anything like that, or?
Well, I mean, since the bid laws have changed, you know, I mean, we surely, you know, we can work together on things, I mean, there's not really a really big project out there except for will be the water transmission line and our, you know, our consultant engineers is putting that out to bid, and Michael, I know, has shared some information at times probably with the town administrator, you know, maybe not when you were here, but prior to you.
Well, that's the grant applications?
The grant applications and the bid applications.
Oh, the bid, yes.
Because now, you know, with this coming up to vote for the debt exclusion, I told Mike, let's go forward and put the bid out, because if it passes debt exclusion, we want to get it done, at least started this construction season, because it's a critical link.
Right, if he could just touch base with me before he puts, because I hear about it after the fact, and, and then, you know, for the, there was a particular bid last year and I wasn't even going to be here. even going to be here. So yes, if he, before he does that, if he can touch base with me, appreciate it.
We're just at the bidding, sometimes changes with the laws and the requirements, so I just want to ma- make sure, because sometimes you can save 100 bucks, but now it costs at $10,000 for court costs, because you made a mistake on something, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
And so it's just important that.
Well, I mean, any, any consultant engineer, whether it's us, the schools, anybody that, you know, that has a project that's going out to bid should absolutely be talking to the procurement officer.
I, I guess as long as we're all communicating together, then, as long as we continue to communicate together, that's a good thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, that was the only question I had.
Thank you. Yes, that's Cindy. Thanks, Phil.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Marlene, Town Administrator Report, topic number 10.
Green Communities Technical Assistance. As you know, the town of Hatfield did submit an application, a green energies or green efficient projects, grant application to the Department of Energy and Resources. I'm still waiting to hear back as to whether, you know, we've been approved. And provided we are approved for those projects, Pioneer Valley Planning is offering technical assistance to communities with either preparing the grant application, but that's already passed, or with procuring the activities of those approved funded projects, and to assist with the annual report preparation. So the technical assistance is, is $5,000, which is provided by the Department of Energy and Resources to planning agencies. They look to the community for in-kind match. So what that means is that, say, for example, Phil's time, my time, we still must sit down with the representative from Pioneer Valley Planning and, you know, work through these. So they're assisting us, and if we didn't receive that assistance, then that work is still required of us. It would just be more of our time involved, spent on the, on that project.
Right.
So I, I welcome the assistance from them and would recommend that we accept it.
Well, I, I think they've, I think they, as a group, at least in this instance, for what we're looking for, for the, for the green projects, you know, fill a void that we just don't have.
Yes.
And by that, I mean, we don't, we don't have a separate committee, we don't have a separate person that all they can do is sit and do this type of legwork and homework. As it is, you guys and probably others are still going to need, will still be required to work with them.
Yes.
Answering questions and identifying projects and, like you said, matching in-kind-
Pulling the data, yeah.
Yes.
Pulling data together.
That only we would know because it's our town, but they can do all the, the other chasing and legwork for, for information, to see what's available, so.
Yeah.
Cindy or Ed, you have a question of Marlene?
I did, actually. It, it doesn't assist with the grant application itself, though, by looking at this.
It, it can, but we've already submitted the grant application. And we submitted that under a previ, well, a previous assistance program, very similar.
Yes, right, yep.
So we, yeah, the assistance with preparing the application wouldn't be necessary.
And the actual $5,000 is provided by the state?
Correct.
Not, not by the town of Hatfield?
Yes, and at, at the top of this MOU, they're, they've been, they being Pioneer Valley are receiving the financial assistance from the Department of Energy and Resources.
Right. Okay.
Since it's not costing us any money.
Nope, I have still time and effort, but, but yeah, not-
Right.
Not money out of our pocket and, and assistance in, in doing it.
Okay.
Right.
I'll make a motion to move to accept and authorize the chair to sign the Green Committee's Technical Assistant MOU to assist with procurement activities for approved grant-funded projectors and assist with preparation of annual report to Department of Energy Resources.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you.
Yep. We have some information, Smith Academy Park Design Next Door Services Contract. That's the park that town meetings approved-
That's correct.
A couple of times, a couple of times now, actually, but.
Yes. And Open Spaces is prepared to move forward with the design for the landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
And then the construction will follow next year.
Okay.
So I'm requesting the board approve and sign the contract with Martha Lion Landscape Architecture LLC.
Since the town approved this at town meeting, I will move to accept and sign the contract with Martha Hawaiian Landscape Architecture LLC for Smith Academy Park.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, proposed? Under new business, Marlene, number, number 12.
Procurement Services and Supplies. Ed and I had had a discussion and, you know, had, Ed had talked about reviewing the procedures and best practices for procurement of services and supplies.
I guess basically, we just want to ensure that all the department heads are aware of any new changes since you're chief procurement officer. Some of that responsibility falls on you, so I, I guess maybe periodically, I would say, communicate with the department heads at your weekly meeting about the new updates or, or how best to make sure that we're following the proper procedures, that's all.
Last year, the legislature filed a municipal modernization bill and there were quite a few changes made, and we did touch upon those at the department head meetings. Procurement of services and supplies, the threshold did change from any, any supplies of services between $10,000 and $35,000 was increased to $50,000. So that, that is a change that, you know, any, any supplies or services, we are required to obtain at least three quotes. Anything over $50,000 would need to go out to bid.
Presently, do you think we're doing everything we should be to make sure we're staying within all the regulations?
To the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware. Some of the procurement is done through other offices-
Okay, so.
-or departments.
Just periodic updates with the departments is probably ensuring that we're following the proper bidding laws and stuff? Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay. I think we're actually on topic 13, which is the project updates. We already mentioned that, right?
Right.
As far as posting them and making accessible for people to see.
Putting on the website, yeah. I mean, if it's attached to the website, then the town can be aware of the projects that are, where the, where the status is, you know? When's it going to start, or when's it going to go out to bid, or? And this way, it cuts down on people wondering what's go, what the heck is going on, right? Okay, so that's a good thing.
Well, it, it gives them the opportunity to see what's really going on versus hearing something or-
Correct.
Right.
Not understanding what's going on.
And I'll be sure to bring that up at the next department head meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, because it wouldn't be just a DPW project necessarily. It could be any schools, could be, yeah.
Could be anything.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right, we're going to move back to item number six, since our friends from the assessor's office are here with us this evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Scott, on your reelection. And Ron, your e-election.
For a few more minutes.
Yeah.
I'm the chairperson-
Oh, nice.
Till we convene.
Gotcha, okay.
Cindy, we all welcome you and-
Oh, thank you.
-to the board.
Modern, thank you.
Jen has been working with Marlene and who else was, oh, and Jane, in reference to this program.
Excuse me for one second, I'm sorry, Ron. I, I just wanted to say, because I never mentioned exactly what we're going to be referring to. So we're, we're going to be referring to the senior citizen property tax workoff abatement application, which is part of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, and to just have some conversation regarding changes or updates or improvements.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just-
No, that's fine.
Just so people knew what the topic was that we were discussing, that's all. My bad.
Predicated on the meetings that she's had, they've developed some guidelines, which are similar to our abatements and so on, but most importantly, it'll be based on need.
Mm-hmm.
So whoever applies will have to provide financials and show the need. And one other thing we were thinking, we've only got $5,000 in there, and initially it was discussed of setting an amount up to $1,500, and we were thinking, that's not going to go very far. We thought maybe if we set it at 500, and then as we get partway through the year, if we don't find too many applicants, we can boost it up. And Jen, you want to?
Could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
So it, but it sits at 1,000 right now, right?
1,500, it was just-
Well, I mean, it was up, but, but current, you know, currently or as of, up until two weeks ago, was that 1,000?
Yes.
And so the, the recommendation may be to actually lower that to 500 per family or person?
If, if I may build on that.
Yeah.
1,000 was the cap.
Right, okay.
And, and 1,500 is the cap.
Yep.
But you can set the limit per person, and if you find, like Ron and Jenny had said, that you were not meeting or there's more applicants-
Gotcha.
Then what we can do is, if we keep it at 500, we can service-
Thank you for clarifying, right. So, so, so the, yes, so we, not to exceed 1,500 per family, what the town voted on and the state suggested, but, but we're looking at a capping at 500 per family, so that more people can take advantage of it.
Correct.
Potential.
Correct.
And, and one other factor, Jen had just mentioned, typically, we only have, I don't know how many senior abatements, but this year, because Jane had put in newsletter, what was the number we've had?
Well, it's been the last few years. I probably, it went up by about 15, I think, so.
So we want to be prepared to at least help everyone if we can.
Right.
And still have some flexibility.
Yeah.
I guess we just have to understand town meetings vote, how does, how did that vote, does the vote mess us up now because the vote was 1,500?
No, it just puts a cap on it, per family.
Right. Still saying, the maximum is 1,500.
Correct.
Okay, so we can, according to, we can change it.
We have flexibility.
Yeah. Next year, if you elect that you would like to use-
Excuse me.
Next year, if you would like to have the town provide more, we can always up that through, because it's covered through the overlay account. The other is, is folks apply for reduced taxes or abatements and we get reimbursed through the state. When we do this, this is something the town assumes on its own and it comes out of our own taxpayer money.
Right.
So that, that should be understood.
Thank you, yeah. Okay.
You got any questions, comments, Jen?
No, I think that's it.
Well, I'd just like to add, so, you know, we, we talked about the criteria. We, we increased the criteria. We added an income base. The application has been tweaked and, you know, addition, additional guidelines were added and essentially, I don't know if the assessors have, have taken any action, I mean, do, do you agree with, with this, the criteria in the application?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, we do. We tasked Jenny to, to work with, with you folks in putting together a, a good solid document. I know that in, in the past, virtually anybody could apply for this, and regardless of financial economic standing, this criteria puts some things in place that, that a person has to demonstrate need before they can apply to this.
Okay.
Right, another, another item added is the deadline.
Yes.
We didn't have a deadline for applying previously.
And I believe Jane will, is Jane going to put a newsletter?
Yeah, I think we're going to meet again.
Yes. And did we, we also said it would be on a first come, first served basis?
Yes, yeah.
First come, first served, and I believe through the departments, you also have the opportunity to interview.
Yes.
So you are actually selecting through an interview process, the best qualified candidate to, to work with you for, yeah, matching skill sets.
Absolutely.
So we're saying right now, the suggestion is the cap at 500 and only 10 people?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Because it's only $5,000 that we-
In the bucket.
In the bucket, okay.
We have, okay.
I believe the document that Jenny put together in collaboration with the rest of the folks in the town hall offers enough flexibility that in the event that we're finding out that it's not working well for us, it's not cast in stone, we can go back and revisit.
Correct.
So, so there's plenty of opportunity to, to change if we need to.
Sure.
Now, at the $500, how much is that calculated per hour? I mean, is it so many hours at $500, or is it so much money per hour up to the $500?
It's $11 an hour.
$11 an hour, okay.
That's a good question, Ed. It is, it is, yeah, it's more than one hour.
Like 49 hour, 40, whatever that equals.
Yeah.
Okay. So the, this looks fine. Thank you very much, everybody who worked on it. Looks good to me. How will we, will it just be verbally or an extra sheet of paper handed to the individual as far as, so they know it's only $500 or at least $500 at this point? Because all this, you know, this does show the additional guidelines of 1,500 per household and other. I just, just so somebody understands coming in that, you know, this is going to be capped at-
After looking at, Marlene and I got tons of other-
Yeah.
-applications, I thought it'll be less confusing if I take the 1,500 out and put in what, what the town's going to do at this point.
Okay.
And if it's something we choose to change, we can change it. It's a local option by, by the boards.
And, and whoever applies doesn't mean they're going to automatically get $500.
Understood.
It's going to be based on need of the respective office and how much time they-
Yeah.
That's true, yes.
Another component is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, they don't receive a paycheck. They basically receive a voucher that, that gets credited towards the tax.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think if the, I mean, this looks great to me, just maybe, yeah, changing that 1,500 to five or, or something, just so there's no confusion.
Confusion, correct, right.
Now, I guess the only thing I would say is that's, as we get next, to the end of a fiscal year, let's say, and only eight people have signed up, right? So there's $4,000. I mean, we would, we could pretty, we could theoretically keep them on or is $500 gonna be it?
You could theoretically.
That's completely up to every, you know, both the boards.
I just don't know how many people are gonna sign, that's all.
I, I think what we did was, we, we kind of came to a consensus before we came in here, is, is if we capped it, we got 10 people. If we, if we did it with the full 1,500, you'd only get four, you'd only be able to get three people.
Yeah, that's not very many people necessarily.
No, I like, I like that. I like that thinking. Are, do you need us to accept this? Or just you wanted a verbal to?
The, the Board of Selectmen, yes, should, should approve this and accept this.
Is there a motion to accept the senior property tax work off abatement application with the amendment to, from 1,500 to $500 under additional guidelines, item one?
Before I make a motion, I wanna thank you for all your work and everybody's work.
It's a gentleman.
I appreciate all the effort you put into this. I will make the motion to go by the recommendation and cap it at the $500 and I'll follow up with what we have here in writing.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, that.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Cindy, you also?
I'll say.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you put into it, Ron.
Financial, management, assessment, when, when will that report be coming out?
The, supposed to have it by the end of the month, at the beginning of June, which, as we alluded to earlier tonight, is next, is next week, so.
Okay, so we.
The end of next week, we should have.
We'll have a copy of that as soon as.
Yeah, we'll present it, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
We'd like to review it first. Well, I shouldn't say, right, we'd like to review it, but yes, everybody who's, who's impacted will, will receive it.
One quick question to, to Marlene. Who manages this in regards to, somebody takes on somebody for a department? Will you be the one that collects their slip to turn it in or, or who?
Oh, under this program?
Yeah, under that program, yeah. Who, who manages it? I don't think we do, do we?
Well, I think it's both of us.
Jenny and I have talked about this.
Okay.
And actually, the, the department head, you know, for the, the department that the individual works for.
Should be signing off.
Should be signing off on it and submitting a, a copy to the assessor's office. I'd like a copy, and the, the department head should keep a copy.
Sure.
Because we have to track the.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked it, I wasn't sure who was going to track it and give you the information.
So the department head should be doing that.
Or if you were integral in the tracking.
Right. The department head should be, is responsible for doing that.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Great, thank you. We're getting there. Continuing old business.
Okay.
We're on the second page, near the bottom. Topic 14, the Colonial Power update?
Yes, this is good news. I received notification from Colonial Power that DPU did approve the town of Hatfield's petition for municipal aggregation and will be looking to implement that program very, very soon. There are some statutory, you know, filing requirements and I'd like to invite Colonial, Colonial Power actually has asked to meet with us. They were not able to be here this evening, but they would like to just go over this program. A, an important component of this program is notifying the customers and there is an enrollment period. And if you wish to opt out of the program, customers are gonna need to notify the town that they do not wish to, otherwise you're automatically enrolled.
Right, and so, and the customers we're referring to are this, the residents of Hatfield.
Correct, correct.
Whereas earlier tonight, we were speaking about simply the municipal offices.
That's just the municipal buildings that.
So, yes, so, right, I think it's everyone's, if I'm not mistaken, this is, and we had this conversation through the various meetings with them in the past. Basically, everybody would be rolled over to Colonial Power unless they opt out. It's not that you opt in, you're, you're in it unless you opt out. So more to follow on that, just.
Right, well Colonial Power is, is sort of the middleman. They're overseeing this process.
Yes.
So we will, you know, we'll go out to a competitive supplier for the town.
Right, but we'll keep the townspeople, right, we'll leave, keep the residents informed, obviously, as to if they wanna go this route or that route, this is how you need to move forward.
And following the meeting, we're going to schedule our, our meetings for, for the next few months, so hopefully we can, you know, have Colonial Power come in one of those dates.
It's good to let everybody hear what they have to say. Okay, anything else on that particular item?
Just to mention, I, you know, I did include in your packet the, the approval from DPU. So if you have any questions about it, I have, you know, gone through it, there's a lot to absorb there.
Okay. Thank you. Ed or Cindy, you have any questions on that?
No, I went through it.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission kickoff about the housing projects update?
Just a, a brief update, I met with planning board and a representative from PVPC on May 2nd. And if you recall, we entered into a MOU with PVPC for the district local technical assistance. And what we had identified is, is looking at implementing some of the recommendations that were in our housing production plan. And Ms. Ashley Eaton from PVPC encouraged us to take a look at mixed use districts in town and suggested that we have a roundtable discussion with developers. So she's looking to set that meeting up mid-July and just to hear from developers, you know, what their thoughts and ideas are. So it's the mixed use district for affordable housing. So I'll report back sometime in July, early August on that meeting.
And that's the same, that's the same group that we're looking to increase membership from, from the townspeople?
Right, how did that housing production plan, one of the recommendations was to create a housing committee, which the Board of Selectmen did that. And currently, we have one person on that committee. So we'd, we'd like to, to fill those.
Right, I, I think we'd like to have five people, was, was our original goal. You know, it's, it's important. At least in the beginning, I don't think it's that time consuming. I mean, it's just, you, you wanna have people, townspeople's input into, you know, into this topic, so.
Yes, very much so.
We, we keep asking. And Steph, Steph Slish is the, the only person that's volunteered so far, and I think that was in the fall. So here we are, five or six months later in, you know? Okay, thank you. Thanks for attending that meeting and thank you for the update, Marlene.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Just two other items.
Yes.
Like the Board of Selectmen to appoint a parking clerk. And that would be, let's see, previously, it was, was the treasurer, Louise, and now we're asking if Laura Lee Bertram would be appointed the parking clerk.
And that was, we just had a lot of discussion on that, and so that would be.
We had previous discussions about it and Lydia was looking into it because it, I think first she thought that it lied with the, with the town clerk and it's the treasurer that, that handles that.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Laura Lee as the parking clerk.
A second, that.
Okay, under discussion. So, right now, we don't have a parking clerk, right?
We, we don't.
Since Louise left.
Correct.
And wasn't there a question on, so, is the parking clerk?
If someone would like to dispute.
Yeah, so I have no problem with it being the town treasurer, collector, but if somebody wants to dispute a ticket, it just seems odd that the person they'd go to is the person who collects the money for the ticket, right?
I raised that question as well.
So is that a, I mean, I don't, is that a conflict of some sort?
It's not.
Or did we, no?
It's not.
All right. I just wanted to raise that point, it just, I mean, it's not like it's her money.
Yeah, she's getting a percentage.
But, yeah, yeah, right, right.
I would expect it would have to be somebody, yeah, separate, but.
But it doesn't.
Doesn't have to.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And the other item is if the Board of Selectmen rescind their vote, or rescind their vote of the appointment of Rick Martin to the Historical Commission.